Good evening. Let me go ahead and call this regular meeting of the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District meeting to order. It is now 6:30 PM, Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. We're at the RGCCSD Face Family and Community Engagement Face Center located at One South Fort Ringo, Rio Grande City, Texas. For purposes to determine whether we have a quorum, I'm going to take roll call. Daria Dr. B. Babinell? Not present. Mr. Lesav Velasquez Jr.?
Present.
Present. Mr. John A. Pope IV. I believe he's at his dad's anniversary mass. He's running a little bit late. Mr. Noe Castillo?
Present.
Mr. Basilio Divarreal Jr.?
Present.
Mr. Jay Penya? And myself. Edith Ramirez, present. We do have a quorum. Section two, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Castillo, will you help us with the pledge of allegiance? Yes, sir.
(inaudible)
Section three, Approval of Minutes for the Special Board Meeting held May 11th, 2021, and the Regular Board Meeting held the same day, May 11th, 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve special board meeting May 11th, 2021, and regular board meeting May 11th, 2021.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes four to zero. Section four, Public Forum. Do we have anything on public forum? Thank you. Section five, Reports and Information. I believe we do have a few items that we need to cover today. The first one being item number one, Report and Recognition of Computer Technicians. Mr. Eddie Science and Gina Gonzalez.
I'm going to go ahead and be upfront with this. In my opinion, this is a recognition that is way past due, especially because of everything that's happened throughout this year due to COVID. I want to backtrack just a little bit, just to bring everybody up to par. I thank and I thank Mrs. Gonzalez for being here with us. We came back from summer break July 19th of last year, 2020, and we knew it was going to be a very challenging year. We came and we had 7,500 laptops waiting for us when we got back from summer break. What an expectation. The tech showed up and right away, we got HPs, we got Dells, and we started doing installations. Turned them on, put antivirus on it, anti-addware on it, we put an Adobe Reader on it, Microsoft Office, we did Googles since we were going Google Classroom, we installed Google on it, and of course, all the updates on it. That took us a day to do several laptops so we could create images. So in 14 days, three weeks, we had set a deadline of August 7th as a deadline to have these laptops finished and ready to go to the kids. We unboxed them, created the images, put them back in the box, and got them ready within 14 days. That's over 500 laptops a day that these ladies and gentlemen had to work with. We also, not present is our audiovisual department. They would unbox, the techs would do everything to it, and then the audiovisual would box them up again, set them aside by campus, and ship them out. We also did delivery on them. Yes, laptops were just one issue. Aside from that, we received close to 1,000 hotspots, which they also had to unbox, set them up with a username and password that kids could remember, box them up, send them to Ms. Gonzalez, have the kids check them out. So 7,500 laptops, 1,000 hotspots, within 15 days, and they did it. And this was during COVID. So the second part to that, once we passed them out, they were in the kids' hands, now we had a hotline. The techs had graciously accepted to get a Google phone number so that parents and students could call for any issues. Their hours of operation is 7:30 to 4:30. Since parents had the number on screen on the web, our techs were getting calls up to 9 o'clock at night, and they didn't complain. They helped parents, they helped teachers, they helped students, and they got the job done. I am very proud of these technicians that you have here. And again, there are some missing, not all of them were able to come, but they did this for the kids. If they would not have done it, who else could have done it for us? So I think I am so proud, so proud, that they are getting recognized at this time. The reason they're here also is because now all of them, the people here that you have present, are Google certified. They all became Google certified. 14 took the training, 14 passed the test. And then today, I was told there's five of them. All the people you see here in front of you have their bachelor's degrees. All the techs that are here have their bachelor's degrees, with the exception of one or two. And now they're telling me that they already started enrolling for their master's program. Can you believe that? They're going for their masters. So their vision is high. Their vision is high. So this is something that is well deserved. Ms. Gonzalez was the one that said, "Why haven't we recognized them?" And I totally agree. Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry. I'm just so proud of these people that it skipped my mind. To us, it's an everyday activity. It's an everyday activity. So with that in mind, I'm going to start introducing the people that are here. When I call your name, please step up and remain standing in the front. Mr. Ernie Seal? Ms. Rose Lopez? Mr. Ray Science Jr.? Mr. Mike Guerrero Jr.? Mr. Jesús Alaniz, we call him Chuy, Chuyito. Mr. Freddy Álvarez? Ms. Adamara Alaniz, call her Mara. Mr. Derek Avila? Mr. Hector López Jr.? Mr. Tomás Esparsa? Ms. Terry Gutierrez? And finally, everybody's lovable computer technician, Ms. Becky Garza. We have two of the people that couldn't make it today, Mr. Joe López and Mr. José Edén de la Cruz. They couldn't be here with us today, they had other commitments, but I'm glad you all applauded because they really deserve that applause. So on behalf of myself, Mrs. Gonzalez, to you guys, thank you so much for everything you do for the district. I know it's all for the students, and we respect you and congratulate you for that. Thank you so much.
Item number two, Update Report on Athletic Facilities. Mr. Ramirez?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Penya Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. A quick update on the athletic facilities that we've been working on. Thank you all. These items were passed back in February, if you recall. The first one is the batting cages at RMS. 14 pitching machines were ordered, installed, and are ready to go. There are minor things that we still got to do there. We got to do some painting, some batter's boxes, and some lines for safety. We're also ordering some helmets with face guards and also some padding for the poles to avoid the ricocheting of balls back to the athletes. Years ago, we did have a ball ricochet off a pole and hit one of our athletes in the eyes. So for that reason, we'll make sure that they're safe to use before we open them to a public. Okay? The second one is, of course, the Gruia High School baseball and softball canopies. Those have also been completed. The press box at Gruia High School is almost done. We've got to a couple of things. The AC and some countertops, they also need to be finished there. It was also recommended we look at the windows. Those windows were not shutterproof. For that reason, there's a concern about maybe a baseball coming back and maybe breaking one of those windows. So we're looking at that. We're getting a quote as we speak. The other project, the Roque Guerra Elementary Bleachers, all the rotten material, the wooden bleachers, the metal, has all been replaced and painted. We're still painting some of the, I'm sorry. I believe there's some pictures. Mr. Osuna?
Okay. So on the Roque Guerra Elementary Bleachers, they're almost complete. I spoke to Mr. TJ today, and he said that they should be done by tomorrow. Okay? The other project, of course, NFHS cameras. As a matter of fact, this Friday, they'll come in to install the first one at Rio High School Gymnasium. We're super excited about that. They will allow us to livestream games at the gymnasiums, baseball, softball field, and of course, the football for soccer as well. Okay? Those games will be starting next year, will be livestreamed. For those individuals that cannot make it to those games in person, they'll be having the opportunity to see them from the comfort of their own home. So again, congratulations and thank you all for the support for athletics. There, we're showing some pictures of before. I don't know if they were able to go back and take the after pictures, but those are the pictures that were taken here last week.
Any questions?
I'd just say that Roque Guerra, that's basically my neighborhood. They look good. The batting cages, what can I say, man, they look terrible. I mean, I passed by there the other day, and something fantastic. And the good thing I can say about La Rúa, they're not going to get suntanned anymore with those canopies. So overall, I think, great job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Let the minister reflect also that Mr. John Pope is now present as of 6:44 PM.
I apologize, I had to be in a mass.
No, we understand. We understand. Item eight, I believe is next, Report on Purchasing Manual.
Good evening, Mr. Ramirez, Board President.
Good evening.
Board members, Mr. Penya Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. Just wanted to report basically on the purchasing manual. This year has been a very good year. We've transitioned. I've had big shoes to fill with trying to help follow in Mr. Smidley's absence. The only thing we wanted to see is if in the purchasing manual, we could include to update our requisitions totaling less than $4,999 to require only one quote, okay? Anything over $5,000 to also require one quote if we still have state-approved vendors, or if they're in a part of our bids, or if they're in our cooperatives. I would like to keep this at least under the $10,000, just to abide by the federal programs as well. Okay? So when this comes in into totaling it, it's just making sure that we're allowed to get the one quote. And if we do not have a state-approved buy-board vendor, or they're in a bid, or they're in one of our local, I guess you could say bids, then we're going to offer that three quotes are needed for the vendors that do not participate in any of those, and then still keep it at the aggregate of the $50,000. That was probably the only update that we would like to have at this point for this upcoming year.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. The next item is item number 10, Update on Rio Grande City CISD Enrollment Study by Campus. Information only. Mr. Álvarez?
I put a red folder with your name. You should have four pages, first one being a spreadsheet, and three pictures following that. I'll wait for Mr. Penya.
Yes. On that note, I'll let the minister reflect that Mr. Penya is now walking in. Jay Penya, it's 6:47 PM.
My apologies.
Mr. Álvarez?
This spreadsheet represents a concern that our central administration had with enrollment in our campuses. If you look at the portion at the top where it says current year enrollment at peak, we took the counts of enrollment to our elementaries. If you notice, the ones highlighted in yellow at the bottom are the ones that were looking at a lower enrollment. So if you look at the top, La Oñon Elementary topped the list, right below it, Ringo Elementary, and then John and Olive, Dr. Ramirez, Gruia, Alberto Encelia, Alto Bonito, Ricardo Sanchez, and finally, at the bottom of the first top sheet is Roque Guerra. So what we did was, starting with La Oñon, we needed to figure out and try to balance out the numbers so that we could spread them out more evenly. So the whole goal was to try and spread them out more evenly. If you look at the goal on the top page, we were trying to set everything around 550. It became a little impossible to do that because once we started juggling numbers, the numbers that were small, we just made them smaller, the ones that were big, we could only move so much. So rolling to the bottom, projected enrollment in 2021, 2022 with a rezone adjustment. Rezoning is one part of a solution to this. So what we did was, we looked at La Oñon to bring the number up from 363 to closer to 450. We looked at the neighboring schools, which are Alto Bonito Elementary and Gruia Elementary. If you look at page number two, page number two is a photograph of a zone map. You see where it says Zone 10 and 8? There is a highlighted orange section. That is the west Alto Bonito section. We looked at that, and the counts from those kids were affecting, were attending Alto Bonito and Gruia Elementary. So one of the proposals is to possibly rezone that portion of that, picking up about 50, 60, 55 to 65 students, which would then be zoned to La Oñon Elementary, giving a projected enrollment of 435 for next year. The next one we looked at was Alberto Encelia Barrera Jr. Elementary. And what we're doing with that one is, we needed to raise that portion. The only way we could do that is if we went to Roque Guerra's Zone 3. If you look at picture number three on page three, what we did was, if you look at the portion in orange, the portion in orange was Roque Guerra's Zone. If we redrew the lines and zoned that to Alberto Encelia, we would prospectively be taking about 35 to 40 kids, increasing that enrollment to 501. Looking at picture number three, or the last one, picture number four, the only one that's left with a small enrollment is Ringo Elementary. And the difficult part here is that Ringo is surrounded by John and Olive, Inoosa, Dr. Ramirez, Alberto Encelia, La Oñon. So removing any kids from those campuses would make them smaller, and they're already in the lower enrollment bracket. So what we are proposing is, since we picked up from Roque Guerra to move over to Alberto Encelia and kept it at a moderate amount, taking one street up from San Benito in the orange portion of picture number four, and bringing down about 15 kids to Ringo Elementary. That's the best we can do right now without affecting the numbers more disproportionately. So the numbers at the bottom now would balance out more to 400 and 500, reducing some of the 600 counts in General Sanchez and Roque Guerra. All right? By the way, the numbers at the bottom have been reproportioned to graduate the kids from the prior year. So the fifth grade numbers at the top are not in effect anymore. The fourth graders promoted to fifth grade. So the numbers at the bottom are reflecting the fifth graders graduated, and the precares moving into pre-K 4 and pre-K 3 are assumptions of enrollment that we are planning. Hopefully, COVID is in the past, and our kids coming back to contact will come back to school. We're anticipating that childcare centers are going to lose some of their kids because they have to pay for the care of those kids, and they can come back and enroll in our pre-K 3 program, and hopefully augment our enrollment. Any questions?
I have one question. All right. So let's say you have a third grader, fourth grader that was going to Roque Guerra, or whatever school, and now we're transferring him out, and he says, "I don't want to go. I want to stay in my school." What happens in that case?
The district has an open enrollment policy.
Okay.
And I believe that under that policy, if the parent or the family chooses not to transfer, it is within their choice, if I'm not mistaken.
I just don't want to get caught with kids that have been in a school for three or four years.
Well, we talked about that, and I think it's important, yeah, it's important to mention.
Maybe not want to move, and I just don't want to force kids to go if they don't want to go. I understand a kindergarten, first grade, or pre-kinder, that's easy, but a third grader, fourth grader that already has his friends established, it's going to be tough.
And now that you said that, we did focus our numbers on first grade and below because those kids really have not been attending a campus, and so they're not really tied to a school. So we focus the numbers on those, and the numbers here are based on first and below. All right? With the option to allow any kids, their brothers, sisters, or siblings in grades two and up, to go along with the younger sibling if they so choose to. If they don't so choose to, then the younger ones can go and the older ones can stay. Or if they choose not to move, we'll have to deal with that, I guess.
I'm glad. I just wanted to make sure that because...
Yes, sir. That is, that was taken into consideration. Any other questions?
Questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Álvarez.
And your retirement, sir? Have a lot of fun.
I was going to say that.
Invite us, sir. When you're having a lot of fun, okay?
Thank you. Well, since you brought it up, sir, thank you, members of the board, those that have been with us a while. My thanks to all of you for all the support you've given, not only me, but the school district throughout the year. I'll be in town, all right? I won't be a stranger.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Section six, Recommending and Approving the Consent Agenda. The board has agreed to discuss the following items. All of the items below, they're not called. That will be approved by consent. Item one, Consider Take Possible Action Trial Request from Gruia High School. Item two, Consider Take Possible Action on Donations to Rio Grande City CISD. And item number three, Consider Take Possible Action on Tax Refunds for the month of May 2021.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda, which is item one, two, and three.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya. Any discussion? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Action items. Action item number one, Consider Take Possible Action on Request from the city of Rio Grande to Use Equipment for the Groundbreaking Splash on June 16, 2021, and the Sixth Annual Freedom Fest on July 2, 2021.
Mr. President, can I make a motion to, and we can discuss them. Item one, two, three, four, and five is presented in a board packet, and we can have discussion on them if we need to.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion on any of those items, one through five?
Okay.
You want to present? On any particular item, or which one?
I'll discuss item number five.
Item number five? Ms. Lopez?
Yes, sir.
And I think it was just a discussion, basically, when I was reviewing the actual booklet, I didn't see any prices. I didn't see, are you all going to inform us with the actual amounts that are being charged to the teachers for insurance?
Actually, we are changing some carriers, and some of them, they're offering the same options. However, the rates are the same. Options are better, better benefits, rates are staying the same.
So basically, the price is the same as what it was a year ago?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion?
Just one quick, that, considering take possible action request from the city of Rio Grande City to use for groundbreaking splash. What is groundbreaking splash?
That's the groundbreaking for the Rio Grande Village, right in front of Walmart.
Okay. They call it Rio Grande Breaking Splash?
Yeah.
Okay. That's...
That's for the three, the three businesses in the economy, right?
Right.
Why is it splash? I want to know.
I have no idea.
We got to be careful, because Mr. Pope's girlfriend might have come up with that PR in the city.
She did it.
Okay. She did it. All right. All right. Any further discussion?
All right. There's a motion by Mr. Varela. The second by Mr. Pope. All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item number six, Consider Take Possible Action on Pay Request Number One and Reimbursable Expenses Number One from Design Group International for the Fort Ringo Re-roofing Projects.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item six as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Castillo. Is there any discussion on item number six? All those in favor so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item seven, Consider Take Possible Action on Requisitions of $5,000 and Over in a 12-Month Aggregate. May I understand, is there some addendums? Right, Mr. Penya?
Yes, sir. They're right in front of you in the yellow window.
Mr. President, I move we approve item seven as presented in our board packet with the addendums presented in the board meeting. Let me read the addendum.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Varela. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pope. Any discussion on item number seven? After having some time to look at it.
On requisite number 3335790, what month is that?
On requisite number 333579, O'Handlin, what month is that? Would that be the previous one? That would be the first one on the yellow packet.
On the supplemental, it's the first one. That's where professional legal services rendered.
The invoice is dated May 5, 2021?
It's O'Handlin and whatever, whatever Castillo, PC, Superintend's office. I thought we had already paid him in the last meeting.
Well, if this one's from May.
This one's from May 5. This was just inputted.
Because I think they had a bill of $20,000 plus in the last meeting, 23, so what would this be about? Do you know what?
I have not seen the document.
Do you want to exclude this one, and so Bala can take a look at it?
I mean, I would imagine.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Can I amend the motion to exclude item 3337, 333 with the O'Handlin group till our legal counsel can review that bill?
Yes, sir.
I want to amend the motion.
All right, so it's amended motion by Mr. Varela, Mr. Pope, you second the amended motion? All right, all is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
And just for clarification, it was rec. number 333579.
Correct.
Yes, 333579. Okay. Item number eight, consider to take possible action on the following, that's bid 21, 22-01, 22-02, 23-03, 22-04, RFP 22-05, RFP number 22-06, and bid number 0050. Is there any discussion on item eight, or do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve item eight as presented in our board packet.
Okay.
I do have some discussion.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second subject to discussion? A second by Mr. Castillo?
Yeah, just real quickly. Request for proposed student activity voluntary accident insurance. Who would that be?
Correct. That is going to be Dr. James McGuire, and he's here to present.
He's present.
Yes, he's present.
Good evening, board members. Any questions on athletic insurance, voluntary on the cat?
Doc McGuire, you still look the same. You know, you still look the same.
Thank you.
From '98, man.
Thank you.
So how is it again?
What's that? Any questions on the?
Yeah, I just want to know, the questions I have is, is it the same carrier we had a year ago? Is it more expensive, less expensive? Same thing along?
Okay, we're renewing with the same carrier, with student insurance plans. They quoted us the lowest bid. It was the lowest quote of the three, it was $419,000. Same price as last year. They did give us $125,000 credit, because obviously we paid for all sports last year, and we only played varsity sports. So they did credit us $125,000, $125,700 for this year.
This is for football and things?
It's for all sports, plus our vocational, FFA, ROTC, band, cheerleading, drill team, all those.
Are we carrying a carrier for catastrophic injury on this?
Yes.
Okay.
The services are the same, they're comparable?
Benefits are exactly the same. We haven't changed our benefits in the last, I think, three years, four years.
So it's just the quote.
Yeah, that's the time we changed it.
It was about four years ago, we changed, that we upped one item, and we're continuing with the same bids. They're just basically, every company is bidding our current policy, unless we want to make some changes, and I haven't made any changes since.
The company is the same, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So they gave us $125,000 credit, so that means we're paying $125,000, as we did a year ago.
Right. It's $293,000, I believe, for this year.
That's good.
We haven't paid that little in at least 10 years, so. Any more questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc. Any other questions on any of the other bids or RFQs?
I have a question on the paving and the re-roofing. Do we have a supervisor that is going to be supervising the projects? I'm asking this because a few years back, we hired someone to pave the Ringold Middle School, and a year later, we had the same problem.
I believe we do, and that's our Director of Operations, Mr. Marine Lopez.
Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Velazquez, what was the question again?
Do we have someone that knows about paving, about re-roofing, that is going to supervise whoever's doing the job?
And you will be seeing it at our next board meeting. We do have an RFQ out. We are looking for an on-call engineer. We're looking for different services, and what you, the example you gave is the reason that we're looking to do that. We have the scope of work, and when I say on-call, what we're looking at, other districts are doing, is they're hiring engineers, and they're not on the payroll. They come in, as we call them, I guess, kind of like attorney fees. So as we call them, if we don't have a need for them, we don't pay them. So we have an RFQ out for a mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineer, a structural engineer, civil engineer, geotechnical company, environmental services company, a materials testing and lab analysis company. So basically, with all of those services, it'll cover everything having to do with paving, with parking lots, with construction, testing of soil, it pretty much, it's an umbrella for everything. So we currently have it out right now, just for bid.
And that would be all local projects? I mean, we're not talking huge projects like paving. In other words, that would be roofing, paving, and things of that nature.
It'll cover everything we need. Currently, I know there's a needs assessment that was done by Mr. Peña in regards to roofing, HVAC, you know, paving. It pretty much, it's an umbrella for everything, you know, that whatever we need as a district, they will be on-call for us. The only thing we need to decide, actually, that you all will need to decide, is in terms of, a lot of the valley districts, some of them get them for three years, some of them get them for two years. I know in talking to Mr. Peña, I agree with what he was thinking, along the lines that he was thinking, is getting them for one year, and if we like their service and we like what they're doing, extending them another year.
But, but Marine, let me ask, I think it's a great idea. They're on-call, so basically, we're going to call them if we need them. If we don't call them, they're not charging us unless we need them, correct?
And the example that I'll give is like, the project that we have here right now currently is, we're looking for an architect, an engineer for, I'm sorry, not an architect, we're looking for an engineer for paving, so, which would be a civil engineer. Once we get a civil engineer, and again, it goes back to what Mr. Velazquez, the comment he made, once we get a civil engineer, he will come up with the specs. You know, his company, and then he will, that company will basically put a seal and say, "This is exactly what you need to go and bid out for." So when we have companies that come in, what we've done in the past, the practice as a district is, we've had, let's say, three bidders, but they all saw different things. So we had oranges, two apples, two bananas. Now, with the specs that the engineer gives us, everybody that bids are going to bid for the exact, specific thing.
Let me ask, Marine, like in the past, come and pave this thing, and they say, "Okay, let me pave it," but there was no specs. In other words, I can pave it for $1, I can pave it for $1.50. Now we're going to have basically actual plans of what is needed, because before, somebody would just say, "I can pave it, I can do this for this," but there was no really any plans. They would just go around and do whatever they thought was necessary.
And the biggest issue here, sir, with the fort, is more important than the paving is the.
Drainage.
Drainage, thank you, is flooding. We could have the best companies come in and do the best job of paving, and it's going to look beautiful for a year, but because of the poor drainage that we have here in the district, we're going to be back to where we started off in a few years. So that's where we're hoping the engineer, you know, that comes in, you know, that they'll solve the drainage problem, along with, you know, then we'll go ahead and fix the paving problem.
And it's good you mentioned that, because there is, I know that things like the drainage and soil testing and stuff like that, if you don't figure out what the issue is before you start construction, you bid out, then later it turns out, you open yourself up to lawsuits, because they'll say, "Well, you know, we didn't disclose that the soil had this issue, or the drainage had this issue," and obviously, your construction costs go up. And that might have been something that could have affected us in the past, because I know that a lot of the ground testing and stuff like that is much more sophisticated than what it was even five years ago, so.
And that's, we got everything covered. We got everything covered here with this RFQ, hopefully, you know, for our next board meeting. That's what we're shooting for.
Does it rain here, Mr. Marine, or not?
Not often, but when it does. Any other questions?
Any further discussion? All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I add?
Sure, Mr. Peña, go ahead.
Members of the board, Mr. Lopez has done an outstanding job, you know, through the facilities committees that we've developed here in the district, and rest assured that, you know, when we had these rains, he'd went out there, and we took pictures, you know, we have good rapport with principals, they identified the areas. So we went out there while it was raining, or he did, you know, documented, so that we know what to tell and what to show the engineers when they come. So, you know, we are looking at it very closely, and we hope not to make any mistakes, and hopefully, Mr. Velazquez will do it the right way with engineers, and, you know, as before we repay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez. There's a motion by Mr. Varela, it was seconded by Mr. Castillo. All is in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take possible action on selecting a buy-board state-approved vendor, Hellas Construction Incorporated for softball and baseball, turf fields, and artificial putting green for RGCCSD, Grua High School, and Rio Grande City High School, subject to future funding and financing.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item nine, that we take.
Just that one. Okay.
I approve, I move that we approve item nine as presented in our board packet, and this is part of the bond issue money, when we get the bond issue money, to set aside about $2.2 million of bond issue money, and see if we can go for a lease, or not a lease, but financing over either five or 10 years for what is left. I believe that they're talking putting greens, they're talking about putting netting, they're talking about fixing fields in Rio Grande and La Ruya, and I'll pass it over to Ray, but the great thing is that the fields will be the same everywhere, and there will be big savings, because we're not going to have water, or insecticides, or things of that nature. But the idea is to, I think, use $2.2 million out of the bond, and use the rest, try and get it financed. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. Here with us this evening is Mr. Reed Seen, he's the CEO of Hellas Construction, and Brian Prox here as well, he's one of the construction managers. So I want to ask them to come up, and they've got some information to share with you, if you don't mind, a few minutes.
Yes, of course.
And that is the same company that built the other three fields, the stadium and the Grua and Rio High School.
Correct.
Good evening. So we were asked to prepare to basically to renovate the baseball, softball. We were asked to prepare to renovate the baseball and softball fields and the batting cages, and so basically, we're going to show you a few renderings really quick. So we've worked in the, we've worked here before, most of the turf projects that you have were built by my company. So we've gone in, we're going to put up new invisible netting behind the fields, we're going to basically put in new turf, fix the fences, fix the bullpens. It's 100% artificial turf, new concrete, new concrete pitching mounds. So basically, it's what you guys asked for, it's a normal conversion process for us. And so when we get finished, you'll be able to play baseball, softball, all the time, other than lightning, right? You'll never get a rain out again, or it won't be muddy, no mowing, no hops or bounces. And the field should last 12 to 15 years, so it's a pretty long life cycle. And once you convert the field, the infrastructure will be there for 30, 35 years.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but the information is vital, and I can't hear you very.
Oh, sorry.
There you go, thank you. I don't know if it's the volume or the mic. Do you want to publish them? Marine, do you want to publish?
And this is part of that outdoor initiative, right? To bring everything back after COVID.
They were working wood on wood, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that. But then, and they stopped on the wood, and I don't blame them right now for stopping on the wood. The wood prices are.
I saw some benches that they were selling a fuse, and some trucks they were selling about $100. I said, "Maybe we can take the wood from there."
Take the wood from the fuse? Man, it's expensive.
Any questions?
Also, you already, you already bought the wood, right? Yeah.
So let me ask you a couple of questions. What is the warranty on these things?
So the warranty is eight years, but most of our fields last 10 to 12 years, and so you have an insured warranty for the first eight years. So being a Texas-based company, and knowing that we're exposed to high UV, really, the only thing that degrades artificial turf fields is UV degradation, and we buy C8 resin, which is the most expensive resin, and we put a master batch, which is the UV stabilizer package, at eight parts, 8,000 parts per million, which is the highest UV stable package. And so, in the 37 years I've been doing this in Texas, basically, my fields typically outlast, way outlast all the other products. And you have some of our fields now.
Another question, a replacement cost, let's say after 12 years, percentage-wise, I know, I'm not asking for a number, percentage-wise, what does replacement cost after, let's say, you want to do another field from the initial price?
So it would be approximately $5 a square foot to take up the old field and put a new field down. And remarkably enough, we have not been affected in the linear low-density polyethylene, did not get affected in either COVID or the cold weather. So basically, at $5 in 10 years from now, you may put inflation on it, so maybe 5, 550. So the baseball fields are about 120,000 feet, so about $550,000. So the cost.
About half?
Yeah, a little less than half. And so every year, so since you're building the infrastructure and redoing the facilities, and so every year that you use it, the costs are going to decline. So over like a 20-year life cycle, when you change the fields out, every time you use it, every time you use the field, the use is, the cost per use is on a steady decline down. And it will stay in a declining expense for the next 30, 35 years.
Last question, how many, like, can you mention some other deals that you have, either at universities, or high schools, or things of that nature?
You don't want to be my first client?
No.
I'll let Brian give you that.
In the state of Texas, we have typically 70% of the entire turf market in this area, softball, baseball at Zapata, along with their football field. We've got a 12-year-old field at La Jolla. We have the three fields here with the district, softball, baseball for Jim Hogg County, every stitch of yarn for Laredo ISD, Laredo United, Mission ISD, Edinburgh ISD, San Benito ISD, you name it, we own the market in this area.
I went with you guys to go see the Zapata field. Yes, sir. And I was very impressed. You know, I think that Mr. Ramírez and I toured that, I think he's mentioned that the baseball fields are bigger than the football field.
Yes, sir.
You know, and we walked that, and it was very impressive. The color, the feel to it was really, it was really impressive, and I think that you guys have a great product, and, you know, one thing I would, if you could mention, you know, that you guys are all a one-stop shop in what you guys got, and that you guys are selling your alls, yourselves a little bit short, because you guys do this for some professional teams also, so, you know.
Dallas Cowboys, Las Vegas Raiders, SoFi Stadium, the Chargers, the Rams, the Texans, the Chiefs, the Washington Football Team, the Miami Dolphins, we have those guys. But really, quite frankly, our business is K through 12. You know, out of our annual turnover, 98% of our business is K through 12, and about 70% of it's in the state of Texas.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Varela.
Just one quick question, on the architectural or the engineer of this, these are all plans that are already pre-engineered, correct?
That is correct.
Is there, because we're going to, we just talked about it, other item about having engineers on-call, would your engineers assist us so that we don't have to pay so much to our engineers? Because I know they're already engineered plans, and us as a district, we have to go out and hire and do RFQs to install a new field. We're state law. So I guess my question is, will you be able to assist us so we can lower our engineering fees based on your engineers? Because I know you've got them all over the state. Would you be able to help us in facilitating and lowering those engineering fees?
Yeah, so in our estimate, we have an allocation for engineering fees, and we have an engineering firm who's prepared to represent you at a very low cost, and we have in our proposal to do geotechnical exploration on the fields to ensure that what we've bid is correct. But the fact that we've built around all these other facilities, we know the site and the dirt work really well, so we're very comfortable with the presentation.
So you have an engineer that's representing the school?
Yes, we do.
Any further discussion on item number nine?
I'll be honest, I'm very excited. I didn't see the field like Mr. Castillo did, but they tell me that you do a lot of I didn't see the feel like Mr. Castillo did, but they tell me that you do a lot of fields. And to be honest with you, Mr. Ramirez, we have all the trust in the world, so, for me, I'm just saying for me. And with that said, I need a second.
Yeah, there was a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much, it's going to be great for the kids, they're going to love it.
Indeed. Thank you, sir, thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Penya.
Could we go back to number eight, we need clarification on that one.
Okay, I think we need a little clarification as it relates to bid number 0050, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
We do have, Mr.
Go ahead, Ms. Menes.
We do have Mr. Delpino here present to go ahead and present the item for bid 0050.
Very well.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Ms. Penya. We received bids last week for the roofing project. And the lowest responsible bidder for, for the base bid, which was a 205-pound weight shingle roof with a 25-year warranty. And, and then we had an alternate with a 355-pound weight with a lifetime warranty. And we're recommending that the low bidder of the base bid and the alternate be accepted. The low bidder for, when you combine the base bid one and the alternate is RM contracting at McAllen. And their, their cost for, is $265,950. So we just wanted to clarify that, that it is the base bid with an alternate. And the alternate increases the, the warranty on the shingle and the weight of the shingle.
So lifetime?
That's correct.
Now, for clarification, is that suffice for minutes or do I have to re-recall? Sufficient? Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Item number 10 is, I've been informed that it's misworded, it should read, consider take possible action on issuing RFQs for architectural services for performing arts building and indoor swimming complexes for RGC CSD, Rio Grande High School and Rio Grande City High School.
I saw move, Mr. President, that we approve item 10 as presented in our board packet.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, do I have a second?
Subject to discussion, I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Penya, go ahead with discussion, Mr. Penya.
My only concern is more of a technical legal, can we amend it at this point?
Yeah, we can amend it.
Yes, okay.
What do you need?
All right, no, no, not the amendment, what I mean is, can we deviate from the, from the language on it? Are we okay with that?
Oh.
Because I know it's just for RFQ, okay. That's the only question I have.
Subject to the amendment, you mean?
No, no.
Yeah, because I, I know you said there was a, there was a, everybody, it changed substantially the language in item 10.
Correct.
I just want to make sure, okay.
The notice is aired.
Okay.
Correct.
We can always fine tune it, but we have to give generally the subject matter on what we're going to do there. So that's there, it's just a question of wording here.
Right.
So here's just approval of RFQ.
Which was read on the record, so, all right, any further discussion on item 10? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 11, after looking at it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Salazar, because it deals with real estate, I think this is misplaced, it should be an executive session, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So proceed to item 12, consider take possible action on renaming of Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District. This is an agenda item that was brought to the board on June 13th by Mr. Noe Castillo and Mr. Basilio Varell. I don't know if you all want to present or say a few words on, on this particular item.
Some discussion?
Yes, you know, this was an item that, you know, sorry, but, yeah, the, the Rio Grande City and La Gruia are one at this point in, in the whole jurisdiction. And I think that La Gruia could be included in the, in our language. And so I'll make a motion, I'll move to change the name of the Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District to the Rio Grande City, to the Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District. And to have a contest among students and parents and the public to develop a new logo for the district. So, you know, that's something that I think would unite the district as one, as the whole east side, west side. Because we do have a east side and a west side, but we're still one district. We're two, two different high schools, but we're still the same. So this, not only for La Gruia, we have all the other areas from Garciaville, La Casita, you know, La Victoria. And I think this would be good for the district.
Any further discussion?
From Velazquez, second.
I do second that motion, I agree that we need to add La Gruia into the, the logo. I agree to let the students, the community decide for a logo for the.
I know there's a lot, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion, so.
Yeah, I'm getting, I've gotten some very general questions, is what's, what's the, really the point to renaming? And the only thing that I could conjure up is, I know that there's been more of a push to acknowledge more on the east side. I know we're about to invest in another facility in La Gruia for the middle school. And my understanding is a lot of folks from La Gruia have been very vocal about us partaking and acknowledging La Gruia. And so I just wanted to clarify that. I believe that to be the issue here, well, from what Mr. Castillo has already shared with us, I believe Mr. Castillo also has roots in La Gruia. I think in one way, shape or form, we all have roots there. But my understanding is the only two cities in the consolidated school district is you. So we see the Gruia Gator, I guess, logo everywhere, the, the rattler logo everywhere. And I guess this is just a, this is a move to acknowledge really all of us as one school district, so.
Mr. Varell?
I suppose, and I'm throwing, I'm speaking out loud because I'm trying to answer those questions. Let me just, just for clarification here, I get these questions and then I get uncomfortable answering because the whole point of the Texas Open Meetings Act is for us to talk about these here, out in the open. So I, I don't know what else to, whether explain, what other explanation to answer, I think it's a beautiful idea, to be honest, but.
My, my, my only thing is for the people that are, I'm 65 years old and people that are a little older than I am probably going to remember that La Gruia had a school district at one time, it was the La Gruia ISD. And Rio Grande City had their own school district. And the reason it's Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District is it consolidated both La Gruia and Rio Grande City. And basically, all the kids from La Gruia, of course, Noe's a rattler, Noe came, he's from La Gruia, but they used to come to Rio Grande for the longest time. Well, somewhere about 18 years ago, they built a new high school in La Gruia. And now La Gruia, like, for example, you have PSJA, Far San Juan and Alamo, you have Ed Cowtelsa. And, and the bottom line for me is, back in the 50s, a lot of people thought that La Gruia was taken away from them. And I just think that this brings us back to being one big family. Like Jay is saying, gators and rattlers, and I know we have cougars too, but I, I just think it's something great that we acknowledge that we are one big family. And, and hopefully, I would just say that, you know, in the 50s, they consolidated it. And all we're doing, to be honest with you, taking the word consolidation, which means bringing together and putting what it really belongs, La Gruia or Gruia, basically.
All right, any further discussion? All right, there's a motion by Mr. Castillo, a second by Mr. Velazquez, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. I'm sorry, go ahead, just questions?
Just. Go ahead. Could you just repeat it one more time, sir, because there were several different verses, so just one final one.
The actual name?
Yes, sir.
It's still okay, it's going from Rio Grande City Consolidated Independent School District to Rio Grande City Gruia Independent School District.
Right, you know, it would be, it would be cool if it was Rio Grande City E. Gruia School District. Could throw that E. in there, I'm just saying.
Take it easy, buddy, take it easy.
I motion to amend.
Too much of that Kool-Aid.
That's not even worth the motion.
Mr. Salazar, go ahead, sir.
The only reason we need clarification is because TEA, once the board approves it, TEA is going to want the official name so we can send it to TA and it'll be changed. The, the, there's good news and bad news. The bad news is that, that you can't wear the, the T-shirts anymore. The good news is that they're going to buy new T-shirts next year.
Well, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Salazar, I think that once we start this trend, you're going to have people, there's this school districts that are made up of bigger cities, and I'll mention one. La Jolla is a tiny school district, Palm Beach is huge. And I think we may just start something out there from the valley or other places. Anyway, that's just me.
True. All right. We don't have to recall them? Okay. Item 13, consider take possible action on 2020, 2021 early notification resignation incentive. Do you have a motion or any discussion on item 13? I'm sure there's some discussion needed, but.
I saw move that we approve item 13 as in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second that motion.
Second by Mr. Pope, I heard first. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 14, consider take possible action on district educational professional services agreement between Teach for America Incorporated and Rio Grande CSD for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve items 14, 15, and 16 presented in our board packet and we can have discussion if we need to.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
There's a second by Mr. Penya, any discussion needed on either item 14, 15, or 16? If not, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motions, motion carries. Item 17, consider take possible action on data use agreement Gates Grant.
Mr. President, I move that we approve items 17, 18, and 19 presented in our board packet and we can have discussion if we need to.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Velazquez? Any discussion on item 17, 18, or 19?
Go ahead.
You want to discuss? Which one, Mr. Varell?
She's going to make a presentation on one, right?
Well, I have item number 17, which is the data use agreement on the Gates Grant. And basically, all we're going to, they're going to do is they're going to create, do studies that are going to be conducted just to develop and validate the administration and predict tests to improve instruction. Because that's our focus with the Gates Grant, with the middle school mathematics.
How much was the grant for, ma'am?
Uh, we started with a grant at 25,000 and we got the, that was the implementation grant, but we're already in phase two for 165,000, that'll transition for the next three years.
165,000?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, ma'am.
You're welcome.
That's fantastic.
And we already started working with all our middle school math teachers, so I think we're doing a fantastic job with that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion needed on item 18 or item 19?
I'll on 18.
Mr. Benitez, I think we're going to, okay.
On item, good evening, President, members of the board and Mr. Penya. On items 18 and 19, only if you have any questions.
Concerns? No? Thank you. With that being said, okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, a second by Mr. Velazquez, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 20, consider take possible action on Rio Grande City CSD technology plan for the 2021 through 2023 school years.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 20 and 21 as presented in our board packet and we can have a discussion if we need to.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion on item 20 or 21?
What is the technology plan?
The technology plan was created in conjunction, it was the State and Federal Programs Department, the Technology Department, the Instructional Technology Department, and the Library Services. We all came together and created a plan for the next two years that encompasses both infrastructure, hardware, and software that is going to be needed in the classrooms to support the learning loss. And we looked at everything from what is needed in the classroom, the devices that the students have, how we're going to, the process to collect, and possible insurance, things of that nature.
Other questions, discussion? All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, a second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benitez. Item 22, consider take possible action on redesign of the district's alternative education program slash instructional learning center.
I move that we approve item 22 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Penya, any discussion needed from Mr. Guia? Mr. Guia, go ahead, sir.
Do you, good evening, members of the board, President. Do you all have any questions on the reassigned, on the alternative center? I know that it sounds like.
Can you give us an overview of what's going to be done, sir?
Okay, what's going to happen, sir, we're going to have our alternative center here, here in the Port Ringo. I don't know, next to the technology area, it was a, before it was used to be there, the alternative center. Now, the, the main focus here is on the redesign of the instructional component. What it means is that before, we used to just teach the kids on four core areas, which is math, science, social studies, and, and, and English. But now, we want to have everybody, now with the Google Classroom, we want to have everybody following their same schedule. If I go to a alternative center, I'm a student, I'm going to follow the same schedule I had in the, in high school. And I'm not going to be deprived from my AP classes, from my pre-AP classes, because everything's going to be through Google Classroom. We're going to have everything, but it's going to be based technology-based virtual learning. So what we're doing here, we're minimizing also on the, on the instructional, on teachers, teachers, some of the teachers, it's going to be half of the staff only, we had like 12, 12 teachers, now it's going to be like five teachers. And we're going to serve the same, the same person, the same student population. Now, we're going to have a restructure of the high schools on the pre-alternative center. What I mean is like, on, we, I'm developing something for you all, for the student code of conduct on tier one, tier two, tier, tier three and four. The first two tiers means minor offenses, those, they can be, if they're not mandatory placement, they can be host or they can be taking care in the regular high schools. Only the, the mandatory placement or expulsion will be coming over here to us. So it's going to minimize the number of students coming in. Why? Because we want to keep them where they learn from their teacher. Now, another thing, good thing about it, is our teachers from the regular high school are going to be teaching these kids. Okay, we're going to use a support system or teachers in the AEP just to support and, and walk around, monitor they're doing their, their classwork. But the instruction is going to be from the regular high school teachers or middle school teachers, if we have students. So they're not going to miss on star remediation, they're not going to miss on anything like that. They're going to have their pre-AP classes taken care of too. Before, we, we couldn't, we didn't afford that, we didn't have that. So it's going to be a plus for everybody, for the student district, for the students, basically. And I, I gave a plan to Mr. Alfonso Penya and he agreed to it. And if you have any discussion, any, any, any questions later on, you can just look for me and I can explain it to you.
Let me ask you a real quick question, sir. The complex that they were in before needs many hundreds of thousands of dollars of repairs, correct?
Yes, sir, I was there two years ago.
That facility dates back to 1950 or 40, correct?
Yes, yes, we have a lot to do there. And it's expensive and, you know, now, what we have, we're going to have to also roof it, but, you know, it's, it's less expensive to do that than what we have over there. Yeah. Any other questions?
Any further discussion? Item 22? All right, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, a second by Mr. Penya, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guia. Item 23, consider take possible action on lake shore professional development.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 23 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, do I have a second on item 23?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Castillo, any discussion needed on item 23?
What is it?
Okay. Ms. Aldivar?
Good evening, Board President, members of the board, Mr. Penya. We are planning to have a professional learning development for our teachers. So it's pre-K 3, pre-K 4, and kinder will be one group. And then first and second grade will be another group. So it's a lake shore professional development, we'll be training on learning centers. And basically, they'll be training teachers on how to utilize data to group students in centers and reading groups, how to develop routines and procedures for effective implementation of literacy centers, and how to develop differentiated rigorous center activities.
Any further discussion, questions on item 23? All right, there was a motion by Mr. Varell, a second by Mr. Castillo, all those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could we revisit a previous item?
Sure.
If I could, it's number 10, I'm just stuck on that RFQ issue.
Okay.
Is it possible, I don't know if we have.
On, on the wording exactly?
An architect maybe, possibly to discuss on the swimming complexes and the performing arts buildings?
So you want to reopen for, reopen for discussion?
I think what he's asking, well, that's the reason why the RFQ, basically, we're going to.
We're, we're trying to get, yeah, we're, it's our excuse. We're not hiring anybody yet.
No, but do we have anybody available? I think, like, in-house architect, anything at this point, we're just going to pick up.
Mr. Penya, maybe you can answer that question.
In other words, there are RFQs, maybe the in-house architect.
We're advertising for 10 days.
Right.
So once we get them, we bring them back to you all.
Even the in-house architect may want to bid on that too, if you understand. We're not hiring anybody today.
No, sir.
Where's the RFQ?
We're asking permission to go out on RFQs.
That clarify, Mr. Penya?
Understood, thank you so much.
No, no, not at all. Item 24, consider take possible action on memorandum of understanding between Rio Grande Valley ISDs and RGV IHEs for college prep mathematics and English language arts courses.
Mr. President, I move that we approve items 24, 25, and 26 as presented in our board packet with discussion.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second, subject to discussion? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second subject to discussion? Second by Mr. Pope, go ahead with the discussion, Mr. Varela. Or your particular item?
Yeah. What is the first, 24, what is that about?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Ramirez, members of the board, Mr. Alfonso Peña Jr., Superintendent of Schools. The memorandum of understanding is a partnership that has been developed from five universities of higher education here within our valley, would allow the opportunity for our seniors that are deficient in our TSIs to be able to take the course all year and be able to enroll. Once they pass this course at the end of the year, they're able to bypass some of the TSI exams that they have, so they can go straight into English 1301, the math 1414. So, it allows them the opportunity as well, providing the CCMR points for the entire high schools here in the district, sir.
So, if they take this course, they don't have to pass the TSI?
Yes, sir, it allows them the opportunity for those for the English or the math. If they pass one of the area, they can take the other one, and it's an English ELA, and also the mathematics, sir.
So, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, so if they take this course, they don't have to pass the TSI?
Correct, if they pass the course, and at the end, it's tied to a test for TSI, as well for this course, for this college prep, they'll be able to go straight into that, yes, sir.
If they don't pass the TSI, they take a lot of remedial classes that mean nothing.
Correct, sir, they do spend a lot of time in those classes, which differs them, and most of the time, a lot of the students get deterred in trying to continue their education.
And who's gonna be teaching this?
We have one at every high school, and one for the mathematics as well, sir, at all three high schools.
I think this is a great idea, because there's a lot of kids that don't pass the TSI, they go to college, and the first year, they take half the courses in remediation that mean no credit.
That is correct, sir, and the test just recently changed in January, so it has presented itself a bit more difficult. So, this is a great partnership that we have with all the higher educational standards that we have here in the valley.
All right, any further discussions on item 24, 25, and 26?
I have one on 26.
Okay.
Proposal summer program amendment two.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Peña, ladies and gentlemen. We just added eight additional tutors to the program. We are full force in the program, happy to announce that we've got a lot of participation. I think the last number I remember is this, 1,700 participating students. So, that is good news, that gives us hope for August.
That's fantastic, ma'am.
Mm-hmm. So, this is just adding a couple of more tutors to help out at the high schools.
So, we have more kids in summer than we did in the-
Yes.
Okay, ma'am.
Wonderful. Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Varela, it was seconded by Mr. Pope, all those in favor so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Montales. Item 27, consider take possible action on renewal of Edge Newity online program for the 21, 22 school year.
Mr. President, I move we approve item 27 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varela, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Peña, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor so signified by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 28, consider take possible action on new telephone system?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion on this one to approve LPZ Communications as the vendor for the telephone system for the school district.
LPZ, okay, there's a motion by Mr. Peña, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velasquez, any discussion on item 28?
I'll add some discussion.
Sure.
Based on the workshop, what I gathered is we really had four vendors apply, and it came down to, in my mind, really, Mitel versus 3CX. We had three vendors promoting a Mitel system, we had one vendor promoting a 3CX system. I've done a little bit of research on the 3CX as well, and my understanding is there's been quite a few developments on 3CX that offer quite a bit of features, and it's a lot more malleable also to some of the systems that we use in the school district. Hence, the reason for my vote, but that's the basis of my rationale.
You're the tech guy, sir, so.
Any further discussion?
So, where, I'm sorry, where the motion was to approve, recommendation by the- It would be LPZ Communications as the only 3CX provider.
We haven't heard, Mr. Science, what is, what's your recommendation?
I, not to show any disrespect, sir, but I totally disagree with your recommendation. Let me tell you why. What you see before you in your package that I submitted, it goes back to what Mr. Pope said. This is a very important project, it's a long-term project. So, what we did is, we treated it as an E-Rate project. And just to clarify what I'm talking about, as far as E-Rate project is concerned, we've had E-Rate for the past 23 years. There is a set criteria when you analyze proposals on an E-Rate project. And just to give you a little amount as to how much money we've brought into E-Rate, $22 million by using this criteria, which is mandated by E-Rate. And the reason being that we have this bid assessment is so that we don't have a fly-by-night company come in, and come in and submit something, and it get approved. Example being, we do networking, we do switches, we do firewalls, we do routing, we do access points. We don't want a company from Washington to come in, be low bid, submit proposal, get awarded. What happens to technicians that are local? What happens to the response time? So, what E-Rate did was, they created a set of criteria, so it's a level playing field. Everybody comes in, day one, it's, all the proposals are put into these strategies that are in your packet, and they're analyzed very carefully. This is a monster. Telephone systems were a part of E-Rate. We've been doing this for 23 years, sir, 23 years. We know what we're talking about. This is not something that we take lightly. Mitel is a company known worldwide for doing school districts. I'm sorry to say, sir, but Lopez Communication has zero experience with school districts. Their engineer, which was presented at the board meeting, has done one middle school in, I think it was Wisconsin, and a private middle school in Three Rivers. I'm sorry, that, to me, technology is gonna be the one in charge of this project. We're here because our past superintendent did not confide in technology, she made the decision on her own. And that's why we're here. It was the wrong decision. They didn't ask technology for their recommendation. We would have told them, Ring Central has no experience with school districts.
So, you understand where my issue is, right? The prior vendor was Ring Central, which was 3CX Technology.
And that's why we're getting rid of them.
Right. And so, we have four vendors, three of them are Mitel, one of them is 3CX.
Right.
So, in the past, it was somebody else's recommendation to do 3CX.
It was Ms. Casas' recommendation to do 3CX.
So, that was the issue, because that's what led me, I said, well, we had a 3CX implementation prior, and then we moved to Mitel.
Right.
So, I know that, I was vocal about the contract with Ring Central quite a bit.
Exactly, exactly.
If I recall, if I recalled, they were pushing Ring Central, and when, and correct me if I'm mistaken, when I asked you about Ring Central, you had said, oh, I recommend it, and then-
I've never recommended Ring Central, sir. We can go back to the minutes, I have never recommended Ring Central.
Jay or myself, allow me to speak.
I would, sorry.
It was either Jay or myself that allowed, that asked for presentations, because they were pushing Ring Central, and we didn't want Ring Central, and we were trying to escape from that contract, am I not correct?
Yeah, and that's where I did the research, and I did a little bit on the 3CX. So, my, just, Mr. Science, just to clarify here, not stepping on your feet.
I understand.
My recommendation is not LPZ versus Mitel versus the other Harlingen Company, it's not a vendor for me, it's a software for me, right? It's the actual basis, so it's, for me, it's 3CX versus Mitel. We only had one 3CX provider, and that was LPZ Communications.
Exactly.
But this is the first time that I've heard, because at the workshop, I didn't hear E-Rate come up, and I didn't hear E-Rate within the context of 3CX versus Mitel. So, possibly, maybe we could benefit from a little bit more information on the E-Rate within the context of Mitel versus 3CX Technology, and maybe bring other 3CX vendors to the table to also propose. But I mean, if it's a case that we, you know, if your recommendation is Mitel, then that narrows us down to three of the four providers, that's where I'm stuck. That's my issue, right?
And we have researched this project, I mean, we've tabled it twice already, this is the third time it comes up before board approval. And I've made my recommendations prior to this. Unfortunately, they've been ignored. I think I and my department have the experience necessary to work with this monster. We've done it for 23 years. If you guys believe you have the expertise on this one, by all means, I will abide by your decision. It is not my recommendation. My recommendation is based on the, the reason E-Rate is coming in here is that's what we use to evaluate the proposals. We do this, like I said, $22 million has been awarded to the district because I have submitted E-Rate applications. So, I treated this monster as an E-Rate project. It has nothing to do with it, E-Rate stopped funding telephones five years ago. We no longer get funded for telephones. We get funded category one, which is fiber and internet access, and category two, which is all the equipment on the network. This phone system will be on the network. We have a robust network in this district. Again, my recommendation is Barcom Mitel, that is the technology department recommendation. If you wanna go with it, by all means, I'll appreciate it. If you wanna go with Lopez Communication, it is your decision, I will abide by it, I will support it, I will back it up. But our recommendation is Barcom Mitel.
If I was to say my recommendation is to go with 3CX, how long would it take to get more vendors that actually participate with the 3CX software? Or to give us information on 3CX? My understanding is that Mitel, because a lot of them were pushing some of the hardware that Mitel was pushing, 3CX, my understanding was, was not tied to any particular hardware. And so, I, you know, I don't know what type of hardware we have at the, with the district. My assumption was, we had hardware because we were already geared for Ring Central, which is 3CX.
If we go by the second sheet that I provided in there, Mitel, we're talking about Mitel. Zapata ISD has Mitel, Roma ISD, Rio Hondo, Brooks County, Springston ISD, Texas A&amp;M University, Donna ISD, Eagle Pass, Texas Academy ISD. All these school districts have a Mitel product. I don't know a single one that has the other operating system.
So, no school districts have used 3CX technologies just yet? It's too new?
Maybe it is not a educational entity type of phone system, I don't know.
And that's-
The majority, no, I would say Mitel has 90% of the market, just like Halas presented, that they have 70% of the market. Again, my recommendation is Barcom Mitel. If you choose to accept it, great, if you wanna stay with Lopez Communication, that's out of my hands, but we will support it.
Not necessarily Lopez, could you find other vendors that do 3CX, and maybe give us more of an insider versus Mitel versus 3CX?
Again-
And the reason why, because remember the initiative, is that because of COVID, we're able to implement and possibly take advantage of some new developments. People are now used to working remotely, people are now used to working off their phones. Things that I remember in the past, we used to push and say, hey, people are like, I'm not gonna open my email, I'm not gonna do anything off the phone. Now, people are more open to it, and I know that 3CX has an awful lot of features. It's a very different software, I get it. But at the same time, from what I've been looking at, their ratings, their customer ratings tend to be a lot higher than Mitel's.
And have you found-
So, not necessarily the vendor, Mr. Science, I'm just saying, can we find others that might be able to give us more info on 3CX versus Mitel? Because remember, we can only make this decision once, we only have one chance. Once we implement this phone system, it's implemented for, I'm, not forever, right? That's hasty, but it's implemented for a long time. Right now, we're in the summer, we can move on it.
If you remember the presentation that Barcom Mitel said, though, you have 90 days. If you think that this packaged phone system is not good, you have 90 days to say, you know what, we don't want it. So, we have a 90-day option, that was in the presentation.
Mr. President, I thought the motion was to go with administration's recommendation, so.
Do you have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, Mr. Valasquez.
Well, my motion, just for clarification, I actually named the only vendor that provided 3CX. But I'll tell you what, Mr. Science, I'll amend my motion to go based on your recommendation. But you know, for the record, this is one that's really important to me, not so much because of vendor, and I do trust your technology, I do. I just think we need to push the limits when it comes to using some of the new stuff that's out there.
And if I remember, again, going back to the presentation last week, all three Mitel vendors said that they support everything that C3X, whatever that it is, they all have adjusted to the COVID environment.
And the Google Classrooms, and, because that's a big one.
Yes.
So, let me, if he's amending his motion, I'll second that amended motion, but let me ask you a question. If in 90 days, we get a lot of complaints on the system, you, I, that contract better be written by the side of that, in 90 days, if we have a lot of complaints, that they come and pick up all their stuff, and we're not obliged in any form or fashion to stay with that system? Because that's what basically we said, that in 90 days, we're not, if our people are not happy with it, they come and pick up anything, we're not obliged by that.
Yes, sir, that was what was presented. The only situation there is, it takes 30 days to implement, and then we're off during dead week in July, which we don't come back to July 19, I believe. So, from, from-
So, why don't we install it the latter part of July, and then August, and then get it going by August, September, and October?
I would say, no, I can talk to them and let them know that, is it okay if the trial expires at the end of September?
Right, yeah.
And we reevaluate the situation then. And then, of course, we'll be more than happy to go in and-
We're June, it's 90 days, June, July, August, yeah, tabling is not gonna work.
Well, why don't I ask them, are they willing to go through October 1st?
I can ask him that question.
And the other thing, could I also, on the motion, could I amend the motion that we conduct a survey of our employees on that phone system to see how satisfied they are?
How it ties into the Google Classroom?
Well, how satisfied they are with that product? Because it's real simple to say, it's working, but the only people who are gonna tell us really if it's working or not are employees, or, you know, and I would love, I wanna amend the motion to say that we're gonna survey our people after 90 days to make sure they're happy with it.
Sounds like a plan.
Now, Mr. Science, which vendor is it that you're recommending?
Barcom Mitel, the last presenter that presented at the work session last week.
That one for the Mitel vendor?
Yes.
Okay, so of the three Mitels, you're recommending Barcom?
Barcom, yes, sir.
Okay, so then I motion to amend.
I got a question, what would happen if the 90 days are over and you don't like the system? How do we communicate after that? We're gonna be dead in the water, is that-
For 30 days.
For 30 days, so.
Yes, that, I mean, that is something that needs to be taken into consideration. We can't evaluate after 60 days, because, again, it takes 30 days for the installation. We're off two weeks in July, so there's nobody to test the system.
By the time we get another system in, it'd be another two months.
We'll be into August.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, I mean, I, as the Director of Technology, I am willing to take the hit on this. I have my faith in Mitel, it's a proven technology, it's a proven company. I put my faith that this is gonna last.
Eddie, you don't have to take it a hit for anybody, okay?
No worries.
That's, whenever-
The only thing I'm trying to say, I just wanna make sure that the teachers are satisfied with the products that we're doing. And to me, the only way we're gonna be satisfied is not by, we need a survey, that's for me.
Right, right.
Can we amend to have a survey?
Yeah, we could amend to have a survey, so how would I frame that?
Your motion, with amendment to have a survey.
So, I motion to go based on your recommendation, and then subject to a survey to be conducted in-
It's 30 days, they say 90 days, so it's 30 days to install, but then within the 30 days, so 60 days.
60 days, okay.
But then again, remember, there aren't gonna be any teachers here at all. Teachers don't come until mid, mid-
How about survey in August 15?
But the good, but the good part about these is they're mobile.
Okay, right about that.
It's not for teachers, it's for offices.
Well, this has been used somewhere before, right? So, you could actually go see another campus on their district.
Oh, we have all these schools that have been recommended, yes, that have a Mitel system.
The only thing I would tell you, Eddie, that our school system, why don't we do it the way he's saying, because there's still a lot of, some people that have worked, even though a lot of people leave, there's some people still working in our district, correct?
Yeah, and the deal was, as soon as this is approved, they have 30 days to complete installation. Mr. Salazar is gonna be given the authority to call Ring Central and give them a 30-day notice that we are canceling their services.
Okay, and Rings, yeah, that's the 3CX one.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm gonna second your motion with a survey. I think you already said that.
Okay, there's a, there's.
That works.
After long discussion, which is not a bad thing.
I'll just, I'll leave a comment, Mr. Science. This is, this is normal for me. When it comes to like softwares and stuff like that, I'm always butting heads with IT, but usually in the healthcare context, I know how uncomfortable it is to move out of a particular realm.
Right.
When you use a particular vendor. But if there's one thing that, that Johnny already knows this about me, I push the limits on everything when it comes to new stuff.
And I understand that.
And that's all it is. But I promise you, we're gonna be butting heads a lot.
And I know you're an attorney, sir, I know you're an attorney, but.
He doesn't even show up to the office.
I'm on my phone, typing.
You can butt heads, right?
We were, we were paperless before COVID happened. And I take a lot of pride in that. Johnny knows that.
Action is not a bad thing and I saw you coming because both you are tech guys.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm seconding his motion with what he put.
Okay, so the motion by Mr. Peña was seconded by Mr. Varell. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries after all that, same sign.
Thank you so much.
Item 29, consider to take possible action on proposal to start the district-based 18-plus program.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 29, 30, and 31 as presented in our board packet with discussion that we need.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Varell, there's a second by Mr. Castillo. Discussion on which, I guess we can have it on each one?
Go ahead, man.
Yes. Ms. Garcia, item 29?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Ramírez School Board President, School Board members, Mr. Peña Superintendent of Schools, ladies and gentlemen. The Special Services Department is seeking approval to start a district-based 18-plus program to acquire a facility for the program and to purchase furniture and equipment as needed for this program. This program is going to support our students with disabilities in applying skills that they have learned during the school year in the environments that they will be accessing in adults' life. So we currently don't have this type of program right now, so we're asking for permission for this. Now, funding for this project is going to be from the ESRO III grant, from the IDEA B grant to 24, and the General Fund 199 pending availability of funds. So we respectfully seek your approval.
Okay. Go ahead, and you wanna present an item 30 as well?
Yes. The, once again, we are seeking approval to purchase the dyslexia language life program to use as a supplemental resource for the RGCC ISD middle school dyslexia labs for this coming school year 2021, 2022. The contract is going to start on August 1st, 2021, and end by July 31st, 2022. The total cost for this is going to be $19,219.50 or $6,406.50 per campus. And funding is going to be provided through the General Fund 199 Dyslexia Allotment, the new project code intent code 37, pending availability of funding.
And then you have the dyslexia power-up literacy program.
And basically, this is basically the same thing. The dyslexia power-up literacy program is to be used again as an additional resource for all the high school dyslexia labs for this coming school year. The same contract dates apply and the total cost is going to be $9,600. And once again, this is $3,200 per campus. And funding again is going to be coming from the dyslexia allotment, the new project intent code 37, pending availability of funding. We respectfully recommend approval as well.
I have a motion in a second. The only discussion I wanna have, Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
And I know it was in the last meeting, but again, it doesn't go, because been here for a long time and it's real hard for, for Special Ed to get the accolades you did in your audit. Again, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
On a tremendous audit you had last time and keep it up.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those great comments. Thank you so much.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, was seconded by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 32, consider to take possible action on contract renewal between Roberto de Huerta and Rural Organistic City CISD for orientation and mobility consultation for the 2021-2022 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 32 and 33 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion? All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item 34, consider to take possible action on Texas School Medicaid Direct Service Agreement between Texas Special Education Software Solutions, ILC, DBA, Onward Learning, and Rural Organistic City CISD for the 2021-2022 school year.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 34 and 35 presented in our board packet with discussion if we need.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussions on either item 34 or 35? There being none. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 36, consider to take possible action on cooperative agreement between Rural Organistic City CISD and Pediatric Urgent Care PA, DBA, Goodside Health, and then Telehealth in parentheses.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item 36 as presented in our board packet.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Peña. Any discussion on item 36? There being none, unless you wanna present something, Mr. Varell, it's, you have the floor.
A while back ago, last board meeting, we mentioned these services that would be extremely beneficial for our students here and our campuses and, and the staff. Our goal is for everybody to be on campus and learning as much as possible, so this would alleviate, you know, people leaving campuses and they'll be able to stay there if a doctor, nurse practitioner, PA deems it necessary, okay to stay in campus, okay? So, once again, our goal is to make sure kids are on campus and learning as much as possible and for our staff to not have to take days, for example, to go to the doctor if they would choose to. These services, once again, would be offered to their families. They can always go to their healthcare providers if they'd like. Once again, it's just more resources for our district to offer to our students and staff.
Any further discussion?
Just on a different note, real quickly, I just, again, like I was talking, Ms. Garcia, I'll tell you, sir, thank you for everything you did for vaccination for our adults. I know we're vaccinating kids and I call you Superman, sir. You are truly our Superman of this district and thank you for all the services you've done. Did a wonderful job with the adults and I hear you're doing a wonderful job with the kids. And I think this is a great program and if you recommend it, it's a great thing.
Yes, I do recommend it. Thank you so much. And we are continuing to vaccinate the 12 to 15-year-olds. We actually have a clinic tomorrow at Veterans Middle School and we hope to have a good turnout and to continue because, you know, our goal is for us to return as normal as we can, you know, and I'm sure everybody's goal is the same.
And just to clarify, this is a four-year contract with no expense to the district, right?
No expenses to the district whatsoever. So they come, they give us all the supplies, the iPads, any software that we may need, any test kits that we may need, any medications that are readily available for certain situations, no cost to the district whatsoever.
And just in case somebody's questioning that, how is it that they're not getting paid? It's through a actual CARES Act.
So, yes, for example, if you go to the doctor, of course, if they have insurances, they're gonna bill their insurances. So when you're applying for this program, the parents have the option to choose and they're gonna ask them, do you have insurance? If they do, they put in the information for the insurances and, and it is a doctor's visit where you don't have to spend so much time, for example, going to pick up a person, going to the wait-in line at a clinic, so it's easily accessible for everybody. Once again, the district does not pay anything. It would be the conversation between the Goodside and the parents of the child or the staff.
The parents would never get a bill, right?
The parents, if they do get a bill, it would be a co-pay bill, which they would have gotten as well if they were to go to the doctor as well. But the convenience from not missing work and missing hours and is extremely beneficial to everybody.
But the school wouldn't get a bill?
The school will not get a bill.
And, Mr. Varell, I guess I have a general question, the one that, is a public question that I was asked about, that this just came to mind. These also offer services for students, for example, that might have emotional and mental health issues, autistic students who might be coming back and also have an issue. Goodside also provides services for those as well.
Of course, so our district has great counselors, LPCs, and we have a great staff in our counseling department. This is also more resources that would assist our staff in better caring for any student or possibly a teacher that might have some sort of anxiety or any sort of mental health issues when we return.
And for the teachers, do you, which you mentioned, okay.
So there was a motion by Mr. Varell, was seconded by Mr. Peña. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. The board will now convene an executive or closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting, the Texas Government Code Sections 551.071 through 551.076 and 551.082 through 551.084. The time is 8:08 PM. Okay, we are now back reconvening an open session. It is 9:18 PM. Before I call for a motion on item A, there was a, actually, item number 11 that was misplaced and put in open session. We did discuss it and it was moved to executive, was discussed in executive. Do I have a motion on item number 11?
Mr. President, I move we approve item 11 as discussed in executive session.
I have a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pope. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. Item A, do I have a motion on item A?
Mr. President, I move we approve item A as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries. I have a motion on item C.
Mr. President, I move that we approve item C as recommended in executive session.
There's a motion by Mr. Varell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand. Same sign, motion carries.
I will log an abst, an abstention, Mr. President.
Okay, so there's two abstentions, Mr. Pope and Mr. Peña. It's still the same sign, motion carries, it's 3-0.
Right. We also want the record to reflect that during these executive session items, because there was a conflict, we asked the board members to step outside with everybody else and then after we discussed an executive and they came back in, so the record's clear, that's why board members left. We're outside of the executive because of the potential conflict.
Second, Mr. Salazar. So motion passes with the two abstentions. There is no action needed on item D. Do I have a motion on item E, please?
I motion to approve item E as discussed in executive session, Mr. President.
There's a motion by Mr. Peña, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. All those in favor, so signify by raising your right hand.
Let the record show that I'm abstaining from this vote and I abstain from any discussion on this particular item.
Okay. Motion passes and with permission, I think it's appropriate that we name the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Mrs. Elsa Varell Morris. Do I have a motion on item F?
Mr. President, I move that we approve item F as presented in our board packet.